... meeting will come to order, please stand for Pledge Legion.
Heavenly Father, we come before you asking, Lord, that you give us guidance and direction, Lord, show us what needs to be done and give us a heart of understanding. We ask that you bless everyone that's assembled in your name, Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Clerk Golick, roll call.
Markovich.
Here.
Spitali.
Here.
Vanez.
Here.
Kalwinski.
Here.
Ullaki.
Here.
Higgs.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
Enoson.
Here.
Opinker.
Here.
All present, moving on to reading of minutes.
President.
Councilman Spitali.
With the motion to accept the minutes from January 12th, 2015.
Motion by Councilman Spitali, second by Councilman Kalwinski to accept the minutes from last meeting. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes passed. Moving on to approval of claims.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
Move for approval of claims January 7th through January 21st for council meeting January 26th. Beginnings with claims dated 1/12/15, ending with claims dated 1/21/15, claims number 319 through claims 550, for a total of $2,603,881.59. I so move.
Second.
It's a motion by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilman Emerson to accept the claims. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
I have one addition, claim number 551 to Pepsi for $248,48 cents to supplies for the mayor's office. I so move.
Is there any other discussion?
One order.
Do I have a second on that addition?
Second.
Second by Councilman Higgs. Is there any discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call vote on the amended version of the claims.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Ullaki.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Enoson.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes. Claims passed, 9-0. As amended. Now the claims is written. Clerk Golick, roll call vote.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Ullaki.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Enoson.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes. Claims pass, as written, 9-0. Moving on to public hearing, there is none. Next on the agenda will be communications.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
See the letter from the Hammond Police Department. This is, "Mr. Anthony Higgs, Councilman in the Hammond Common Council, Hammond, Indiana 46320. Dear Councilman, this letter is to update you on the current position of the Hammond Police Department in regards to our participation in Criminal Justice Institute grant and enforcement of pedestrian portion. We believe that the safety of our school-aged children is a priority. When students are walking in and crossing a street in a illegal manner, it puts them at a much higher risk of becoming a victim of a pedestrian vehicle accident. The presence of the students in the streets also affect the way traffic flows when vehicles must slow down or stop to avoid a pedestrian in the lane of traffic. We currently had a meeting with the School City of Hammond Administration. We have their support and were advised that the parents regularly call them to complain about students in the streets and express a concern for their welfare. The School City employs police within the school themselves under contract to assure that the students have a safe environment to learn more better themselves. The Hammond Police Department feels that their safety outside of the school is important also. We feel a moratorium on the trafficking of students who choose to put themselves in danger would be unethical and reckless. I am unable to consider a moratorium on tickets because the next serious injury or fatality of a student would weigh heavily on me personally. I hope your advocates for the moratorium can look inward and make a more sense, moral judgment call and are willing to take ownership of the possible consequences of asking the police to ignore the safety of our children. Sincerely, Chief John D. Doley, Hammond Police Department."
Any other communications?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I know in caucus, the mayor had discussed the rental registration, and I had been doing some research as well, and so the law states this. 36-120-5, the annual registration fee, A, the section does not apply to political subdivisions with a rental registration or inspection program created before July 1st, 1984. B, the chapter does not prohibit a political subdivision from establishing and enforcing a registration program, rental unit within the political subdivision. C, a political subdivision may impose on an owner or landlord of a rental union a annual registration fee or not more than $5. D, registration fee imposed under subsection C covers all the rental units in the rental unit community. However, if the rental unit is not part of a rental unit community, a registration fee may be imposed for each separate parcel of the real property on which the rental unit is located. E, if the ownership of the rental unit community of the ownership of a parcel of the real property of which the unit is located changes, the political subdivision may require a new owner of the rental unit community of the new owner of the real estate parcel. Two, one, pay an annual registration fee of not more than $5, and two, provide updated registration information in the political subdivision not later than 30 days after the change of ownership. History P-L-193-2014-8, effective June 30th, 2014.
Any other communication? Any other communication? Communications is now closed. Moving on to committee reports. There are none. Ordinance, third and final passage, there are none. Moving on to number nine, introduction of ordinances. Clerk Golick.
Item 8, ordinance 15-01, sponsored by Councilman Emerson and Ullaki, and ordinance amending ordinance 4631 and Title 7 of the Hammond Municipal Code, Traffic Schedule 3, and setting a uniform speed limit for Holman Avenue.
Mr. President.
Councilman Emerson.
I move that ordinance 1501 be moved to the council as a whole at our next meeting, 2/9/15. I so move.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Emerson, second by Councilman Higgs. Is there any discussion? Any discussion on 1501?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
In the previous council meetings, we had discussed making it conform from not only 165th all the way to Wolf Lake, but for some reason or another, they felt as though it wasn't as important as it is now. So it's important, I guess, that all the speed limits are at a same speed limit from 165th all the way to Wolf Lake versus having one at 35, 25, 45, or whatever they may be. So I think it's a great idea to have them all set at one speed limit.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? First and second passes.
Item B, ordinance 15-02, sponsored by Councilman Kalwinski, and ordinance vacating an 80-foot portion of Sheffield Avenue lying between 2704 Sheffield Avenue and 2340 Sheffield Avenue in the city of Hammond in Lake County, Indiana.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kalwinski.
I move that ordinance 1502 passed through first and second reading, referred to council as a whole, and schedule a public hearing on February 23rd, 2015.
Second.
It's a motion by Councilman Kalwinski, second by Councilman Spitali. Is there any discussion? Any discussion on 1502? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? First and second passes.
President Opinker, that concludes the introduction of ordinances.
Thank you, Clerk Golick. Moving on to resolutions, there are none. Next will be new and unfinished business.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vanez.
I would like to announce an initiative that the community and crime watch groups have taken on. The Hammond community and crime watch groups are showing their appreciation and support for our Hammond Police Department, and we're inviting you to join in. Our Hammond police officers allow us to sleep at night knowing they are there to protect us. As a symbol of our support for our Hammond police officers, we're asking residents to tie a blue ribbon around your tree mailbox fence or light pole in front of your house. When our police officers patrol our neighborhoods, they will be able to see how much we appreciate them. The blue ribbons will be available at the community and crime watch meetings throughout the city. If you would like to show your support of our Hammond Police Department, please be in contact with me or your group leader at the community or crime watch groups. Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vanez.
I would like to announce the community and crime watch groups that are coming up. On Wednesday, February 4th, Edison Community Watch will meet at Edison School. That is at 6:30 PM. On Friday, February 6th, Edison Community Watch on the Road will meet at the Golden Manor Senior Apartment Buildings, building on the corner of 175th and Columbia. That is at 1:00 PM. Irving Community Watch, and incidentally, Mayor McDermott will be the guest speaker at that particular meeting, Edison on the Road. Irving Community Watch will meet Friday, February 6th, 9:15 AM at Irving School, and the mayor again will be the guest speaker at that meeting. Jefferson Crime Watch will meet Wednesday, January 28th, at Jefferson School at 6:30 PM, and the Pulaski Park Neighborhood Association will meet Tuesday, January 27th, 6:30 PM at the American Legion on Goslin. And that is how change happens, one person, one gesture, one moment at a time.
Any other new and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I'd like a letter sent to Board of Works or to whoever was the inspector in the Second District. 1100 Block of State Street, there is a stop sign with all kinds of graffiti on it. So I would like to, well, you can actually send it to the judge's office. Maybe they can remove it. You may have to just have the whole sign removed. 1100 Block of State, there's gang signs on the stops.
It's a motion by Councilman Higgs to send a letter to Second District in regards to 1100 Block of, what was that street, Councilman?
State Street.
State Street. In regards to graffiti.
You got constituents over there calling.
All right. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion granted.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vanez.
Yes, tomorrow evening, which is January 27th, at the Civic Center from 6:00 to 8:00 PM, there will be a celebration of peace. The Eastside Community Council and the Hammond Police Community Affairs Department are joining forces to celebrate our youth. In honor of our youth and their good deeds at the weekly Eastside Community Council Open Gym Night, the Hammond Police Community Affairs Department will be presenting two brand-new basketball goals to support the youth's continued nonviolence movement and to build stronger partnerships with community organizations. The Eastside Community Council Open Gym at the Hammond Civic Center has been going on for three strong years with absolutely no violence from our youth. Many said that it couldn't be done, but our youth have proven them wrong. Hats off to our youth. They deserve to be commended and celebrated, and that is tomorrow night at the Civic Center beginning at 6:00 PM. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Mr. Mayor.
I'm gonna go up here and do my Hammond 311 commercial again. Councilman Higgs just gave a complaint about graffiti on a stop sign at 1100 State Street, and the time since he's given that and Councilwoman Vanez was reading off her, I already submitted on a Hammond 311. It's under my name, the mayor. 1136 State Street is exactly where the stop sign is, Councilman Higgs, and that's how quick you could do it. Instead of waiting two weeks for the next council meeting, you could just put it right in your smartphone, and it's already submitted to the judge's office. So I want to impress upon the council that it's not just the mayor's office that needs to sell this product, it's you as well. We could also do this, but it was very easy. I did it in about 30 seconds. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other new and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilman Emerson.
I would like to share, a resident had called me and wanted to know if we still did shredding since our recycling has now been put out to Republic. And so I, it's, you know, made a few calls, did some research. We do. She was very happy, and I'd just like to say it's Thursday only, 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM at 601 Conkey, and it's free to Hammond residents. Other people are charged. Their number is 219-359-2885. Thank you. Oh, and I have to add one more thing. On a recent radio show, the, actually the gentleman's here that has a radio show, the mayor, he had a, he wasn't there, but there was a guest. It was Dave Hamm. And Dave Hamm put out an interesting statistic that I remembered. Our recycling rate has increased with Republic in the city to over 300%, and that's because there's less weight being put into the garbage, and that, of course, lowers our bill. So even if you don't care about the environment, your bill will stay lower longer because there's less garbage being put in the landfill. And he had said on the show, if I recall, that it can even be higher. It's actually over 300% increase since we started it, which means money back to the city of Hammond. So I think that's a positive thing. Thank you.
Any other new and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vanez.
I would like to expand a bit on the shredding at JJS, I believe it is, on Conkey Street. Councilman, they will shred Monday through Friday, 9 to 5. It's just if you want to observe your documents to be shredded, it's only on Thursday. And you're only allowed one box the size of a recycling, our old recycling bin. Any more than that, they charge $15.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Any other new and unfinished business?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vanez.
I would like to extend a big thank you to our Hammond Water Department. There have been a couple of water main breaks over the weekend, and I know that they were out there late at night in the cold weather, making the repairs. So I just wanted to say thank you to our water department. We really appreciate your efforts and the fact that you have to go out in the middle of the night in the cold weather to do your job for us. So thank you.
Any other new and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilman Hinoza.
Before I make a motion, I'd like to suspend the rules. We got a couple of speakers that would like to, so we can either go for it or lay it to rest here, that would like to speak on the moratorium on the Indiana Criminal Justice Institute Grant. Therefore, I'd like to suspend the rules. I so, I so move.
It's a motion by Councilman Hinoza to suspend the rules. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Higgs. Rules are suspended. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Rules are suspended.
Mr. President.
Mr. Mayor.
What are we talking about? Last time I checked, mayor's office is in charge of the police department.
Councilman Hinoza.
Yeah, we have a couple of speakers here that would like to speak on that before we make a motion on it. I know I talked to, I talked to the principal at Morton High School. I had a meeting with him, and I think it was after that fight and after they gave the tickets.
Which fight?
The Morton High School. And they are, they are doing, the Morton High School is doing a real good job right now as far as calling the kids and leaving messages on their phones, not to jaywalk. I think it's, it was out of control, and it's back in control already where it's doing pretty good now. I don't see very many jaywalkers anymore, but there's a couple of speakers here. We suspended the rules.
Mr. President.
So they can speak. You can speak, I can speak, and these speakers can speak about it.
Last question to the councilman.
Sure.
What's your recommendation? You don't want to, you don't want the Hammond Police Department to enforce jaywalking infractions? Is that what you're recommending?
I'd like to hear what the speakers would have to say first, and then I'll comment some more on it.
You're a councilman, I'm the mayor. I have the right to stand here, because I'm the mayor. I'm asking you a question, councilman. I don't understand what you're trying to do here. Do you just want to bring people up in the audience, or do you have a goal here?
I already made a motion that I'd like the speakers, the speakers to speak, and let's hear what they have to say, and maybe you can hear what they have to say also.
Mr. President.
Mr. Mayor.
The Hammond Police Department follows Indiana state law. Okay? This is Indiana state law that they're enforcing on a grant from the federal government, Department of Justice. If somebody breaks the law in a school zone, I think it's incumbent upon the Hammond Police Department to enforce the laws. I support them in that. Absolutely. What are we gonna pick and choose which laws the Hammond police officers are gonna enforce? Does that mean if we're not gonna enforce jaywalking, what about if somebody pulls in with Illinois tags? Do we get to ignore that also? What if somebody speeds and goes 55 miles an hour through his speed zone, or through the school zone? Do we not enforce that? The Hammond Police Department's doing their jobs. State law. This isn't a local ordinance we're enforcing. This is state law. I don't understand why we're wasting time. I think, I know why we're wasting time, because Councilman Hinoza has ambitions. It has nothing to do with, this is good policy for the Hammond Police Department to enforce the law. Why confuse the issue and politicize what the police officers do? They're under enough pressure already, like we need to add more pressure right now. They're following state law, passed by the General Assembly, signed by the governor, on a federal grant. I don't know who is in the audience and who could shed light upon this, but I am having trouble understanding why we're wasting time on this issue.
Mr. President.
Councilman Hinoza.
I would agree that the police department is doing an excellent job. I think everything that they've done, because it was way out of hand, we must have had, after school, we probably have like maybe 40, 50 kids that were jaywalking, and just the other day I was over there, I think I seen one jaywalker, and they are watching them. I talked to the principal. They have people designated throughout the school, and they're watching for this. It was out of hand, and I agree with the, with what the police department was doing, but let's see what the speakers have to say so we can make sure everything is
Mr. President. Up to par here. There's public discussion after, after the meeting's over. There's public comment.
Exactly. That's where it'll be taking place under public expression. I need a motion to go back to regular order of business.
I'll move.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Vanez, second by Councilman Emerson to go back to regular order of business. All those in favor? Opposed? Back to regular order of business. All right, new and unfinished business is now closed. Now we'll open up for public expression.
Mr. President, point of order. As president, you're supposed to say, "Councilman, what's your point of order?" But anyway, my point of
There was a motion to go back to the regular order of business by Councilwoman Vanez.
And the regular order of business was new and unfinished business. So we're back to new and unfinished business, councilman. So out of respect to
And I asked, is there any new unfinished business?
No, you said, "public expression."
Okay, is there, is there any new and unfinished business?
Yes. That's why I was saying that.
All right, Councilman Higgs.
That was the purpose. Now, we all know that this is a political year. No need to fight. Just get on the campaign trail, do what you need to do. The City of Hammond and the Black History Coalition Committee presents a Black Celebration, honoring Tim Bishop Memorial, Times African-American Male Athletes of the Year, Thursday, February 5th, 2015, at the Hammond City Hall, 1st floor lobby, 10:00 AM. Thomas McDermott, Mayor of the City of Hammond, Raleigh and Mullins, Chairman of the Hammond Relations Commission, Juan L. Miller, Director, Department of Community Development.
Any other new and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
You know, I'm just gonna say this, you know, I've been very, very low-key in the, for the last month or so, and that's not normally who I normally meet. But the reality of it is, is that, you know, some of the things that goes on in these council chambers, disrespecting one another, and all this backbiting and backstabbing, it's not, it's not professional. You guys need to cut it out, allow one another to speak to the issues as it relates to the constituents of this city. Everybody's entitled to their own opinion. We can agree to disagree, but to be disrespectful and mistreat one another, it's unacceptable. I'm praying that this year is better than the last year, because it was just despicable. All I have to say.
Any other new and unfinished business?
Yeah, Mr. President.
Councilman Hinoza.
Yeah, I don't know if I, I know I missed the last meeting, and maybe you have the paperwork up there that you can give me copies of, but I did ask copy, I did, we did make a motion on November the 18th, or the letters went out on November 18th, that we get copies of all the consult, how much the consultants and the lawyers made in the, in the city and the water department, port authority, and I still haven't received those. Do you know if you got those already, Mr. President?
No.
Or Mr. Mayor, or the city comptroller, do you know when we're gonna get those?
Mr. President, I did respond in a letter form to you prior to the end of the year. The city's financial system does not have the ability to single out vendors by that type. I can't just look for consultants, I can't just look for attorneys. I can print you the list of all the vendor payments that were done during the period requested. It is a large list, so I wanted to verify that's what you wanted before I printed several copies of that.
It was just for lawyers and consultants?
But I can't search just for that. I can't go into the system and put in a search for just lawyers or consultants under the vendors.
Heather, how big
Do it by vendor name, I can do it by the fund. I can't do it by, just look for consultants or lawyers.
Mr. President.
Heather, how, how big is this document that we're talking about? How many pages?
It's gonna be several hundred. I can, I can print it. I didn't know how many copies you wanted.
One would be sufficient.
One would be good.
Okay, will do.
Thank you.
Any other new and unfinished business? New and finished business is now closed. Now opening up for public expression, the first speaker will be Mr. Dan Walzak.
I was in Hobart last summer in August, and they just had the usual beer garden, and they had the arts and crafts and a little carnival and stuff like that out there, but they also had a dunk tank, and actually they had two of them. And they were, there was a trailer there, and the trailer that was there was the Hobart cops. And they were in the dunk tank, they had the wetsuit on, and they were covered from head to toe, and they were like, I don't know what it was for the, to get, throw the balls at the, and dunk them. But I was just wondering if we could take that a little farther in the summer when you have the Wolf Lake stuff and all the other events, and have the councilman, the mayor, the chief of police, or whatever, in the dunk tank, and the proceeds for that could go for the needy and, and people that, you know, obviously need the money. So that was just an idea that I was running through, and maybe you guys can chop it up a little bit, and I don't know, it might be a kind of a good friendly thing, so to speak. But the other thing would be, I was talking about this, I read in a paper here a while back, you were talking about a roundabout? You guys were talking about building roundabouts, and I don't know if, there's two of them supposed to be in Hammond, and I don't know if that's a good idea. I don't know if you guys did any research on that or not. The, I came from Sedona, Arizona, and my brother lives out there, and he says it's kinda pretty hairy with the, with the traffic on those roundabouts. And I'm hoping you guys did some research on it, because the, I would rather have in Hammond more yield signs, if you're gonna do that, before you do with the roundabout. But basically, that's about it in a nutshell, so, you know, have a good one.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, Ms. Carlotta White King.
Good evening, councilman. I truly thank you for this opportunity to allow me to speak. You know, it's great to know that we live in the United States of America where freedom of speech does exist, and it's sort of disheartening when you find of speech does exist and it's sort of disheartening when you find yourselves in a situation that it's being, um, muffled. Nonetheless, I'm speaking to the moratorium that, uh, a group of folks are requesting. We are in the process of, um, putting out a petition, we have over three hundred signatures thus far and, uh, as I understand, we are asking for a moratorium on the grant, not the law. Now, if, if indeed you're gonna enforce the law, why aren't the judges and the employees and everybody that comes through this building during the day who comes across that park, why aren't they not ticketed for jaywalking? They've been jaywalking as long as I've been living in this city. No one goes to that corner to come to this building and the very judge that is assessing these fines, jaywalk daily. Additionally, allow me to remind you that you have already passed the Youth Promise Act last month, which gives us the opportunity to work with preventive measures for our youth, certainly not punitive measures, and that's what this grant has done in the, and since its inception. Uh, again, the chief whatever reason says he's not aware of any fines, well, if he's not aware, that's being irresponsible. If you're administering a grant and you're not following it to the end, to the point where you know folks are being, young folks are being fined and their families, again, that's irresponsible. We're not trying to get a moratorium on the law. I mean, we are intelligent folks and to suck our young people as early as ten years old and to the criminal justice system, what city does that? What CEO supports that? What group of council persons support criminalizing our children for jaywalking? We're not, we know there's a problem, but you don't take a leap and, and, and offer punitive damages to our kids. There has been no education which is part of that grant, there's an educational component. I spoke to Mrs. Wray last week, W-R-A-Y, regarding this grant and yes, the, the, uh, chief admits he met with the, with, uh, Superintendent Watkins, but it was because Dr. Watkins called the meeting based on the letter he sent to us indicating that flyers and education has been done and that is not the case. You cannot administer a grant and leave out the most important component and that's education. Our kids need to be educated, our parents need to be educated, not taken to Hammond City Court and, 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 and put in just subjective just to this, "Sit down, shut up, take your hat off." Our kids don't deserve that. What city does that? That's all I'm saying, I'm, I'm trying to tug at your heart. Our kids are in jeopardy. We're even finding that these minor, uh, infractions can cause our kids to not get their, um, uh, uh, grants, uh, what I'm trying to say, I'm, I'm just, I just can't believe that we are sitting here as though there is not a problem. We've even talked to the PTA who was willing to be one of the facilitators and regarding the Youth Promise Act, Mrs. Vines, Councilwoman Vines, you were very excited about that, uh, Youth Promise Act and you even recommended-
Your time's up, Ms. King.
-a right and we have touched base with her, but again, you don't adopt a resolution on one hand for preventive measures and then on the other hand, accept punitive damages to our young people. It's unconscionable, no city does that and, and why are, why is the city of Hammond doing this? Thank you very much.
Final speaker of the evening will be-
Mr. President.
Mr. Mayor.
I, you know, it's interesting, all this about jaywalking, we've done some research about jaywalking and the statute that we enforce and Ms. King indicated that, uh, Judge Harkin or any of the council people that car- parked across, uh, Lion Street and walk into the court are jaywalking and that's not in fact true. Under Indiana Code, uh, nine dash twenty-one dash seventeen dash nine, to be jaywalking, you have to be controlled, through controlled intersections. So if you picture in front of City Hall, Kayamet, between Highland and Lions, it's two controlled intersections, if you walk through there, you're jaywalking. If you walk a controlled intersection down to Tapper, Tapper's a stop sign, it's not a controlled intersection. You could walk across the street here, that is not jaywalking under Indiana Code. Interesting, has to be between two controlled intersections if you consider jaywalking. So on a hundred and sixty-ninth, between two controlled intersections, that's jaywalking. On Kayamet, between Lions and then Highland, that's jaywalking, but on Lions going across the street is not jaywalking, 'cause there's a stop sign on the other side. Interesting. You, you want me to give this to you, Councilman?
Sure, Mayor.
Okay.
Final speaker of the evening will be Mr. George Stoya. Public expression is now closed. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Councilman Hinoza, second by Councilman Markovich.